July 6th work session.
We still have some CO alarms, but we've gotten to a point with the smoke alarms that we have a limited number. So this possibility in the near future will run out of the availability of the free smoke alarms. Last month, we had a fire at the Jefferson condos that caused significant damage to one, to the kitchen in one of the units. That fire is still under investigation with the borough police, myself and county. I attended a people visit meeting today up in Doylestown. And they talked about all the things that are going on, just some quick highlights on it. The, they're gonna operate three train stations in this area. Originally, it was gonna be Cornwall's and Croydon. They've added Levittown now. So while they're not coming to Bristol, that 13, Route 13 corridor has the potential to get a lot of extra traffic. They're talking about selling like 10,000 tickets at each train station. The trains are gonna start at 5:30 in the morning. If you buy a ticket at the Levittown train station, you'd have a block from 5:30 in the morning to 8:30. The train, once it fills up in Levittown, it doesn't stop anyplace else. It goes directly to Philadelphia. The trains leaving from Croydon will go directly to Philadelphia. The trains will start returning around 5 o'clock at night and run up to like midnight to get people back. All the coordination for resources will be done through the local emergency managers. And the next meeting is in mid-August to continue on the information as we get it, we'll make it available.
So from what we understand, it's the whole city shut down. So nobody's getting a train into the city unless you have a pass to get on it.
The only trains that'll be going into the city are basically, right, you have to have a pass to get into that. And each train from that train station is an express. They won't be making any stops at all. You leave from Cornwall's, you go to the city, you get on the train to come back to Cornwall's, it comes right back to Cornwall's. There's no stops at all. They're not running from Bristol, they're not running from Trenton. They're also in the county, they're running the Woodburn Station and the Wormminster Station. They're the five stations in Bucks County. And they expect significant impacts on all the routes of travel.
We already have, we already have a problem on Route 13.
Right, well, this'll be even, you know, the fact-
Well, they're saying no traffic into Philadelphia, 95, Erich.
95, how to get, they're talking about securing exits in Philadelphia. So you might be able to get on 95, and if you're lucky enough, get all the way through, but you won't necessarily be able to get off exits into the city.
Wow.
Alright, that's good information for everybody. Anything else?
That's it.
Anybody have anything for Erich?
Yeah, yeah, I want to ask you, is there any structural damage with that fire?
No.
No, so everything's okay?
The only, the real structural damage was we had to cut a hole in the floor, because if you're familiar with the Jefferson, it has raised floors. And to make sure that nothing had gotten down below the floor level, we did have to cut a hole in it. But that's, that's probably the only structural damage that was done.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything for Erich? Erich, I just have one thing. I want to go back to that incident at the 21st century event, the fundraiser when lady passed out, we were waiting for a squad until 45 minutes to get there. I'm just trying to understand, I know, you know, we have our own squad, how this works? Because a lot of people had approached me saying, you know, the council's given so much a year to purchase a new ambulance to service Bristol, and yet we had to wait 45 minutes for a squad. Thank God that this council had foresight to give your company the money to keep your squad running. Because if you guys weren't there, there'd be somebody laying on the ground for 45 minutes unattended, which is really unacceptable as far as I'm concerned, and I'm sure I speak for council. We have, you know, it could've been, it could've been a lot worse, it could've been a cardiac arrest. And if you guys weren't there, I mean, thank God again, you showed, your squad showed up, or whatever you call it, showed up immediately to, you know, try doing what they had to do. I just had a problem waiting 45 minutes. Why don't you explain what's going on?
I think actually the, the time was a little bit shorter than that.
I got something, but you were low. I was just muted.
I think the time was a little bit shorter than that, but clearly, when you're waiting for an emergency vehicle to show up, the time seems to be a lot longer. I think it's closer to 18 to 20 minutes, but even there, that's a long time when you have somebody in your family that's sick and you're waiting for an ambulance. The way the system works, that what we're doing right now is that we don't run calls with Bucks County Rescue Squad directly. If they're available in their building and they're coming into the borough, they get here quick enough, it doesn't make a difference. There are times in the lower end of the county where they have one ambulance on, and even times where they have two ambulances on, and both of those ambulances wind up being committed somewhere in the lower end of the county. And so the county's always sending the closest ambulance. So if Bucks is the closest ambulance into Ben Salem, because they're tied up somewhere, they're sent to Ben Salem. And in that particular case, I think their ambulance was coming from Ben, from Ben Salem on that call that, that we were on. So that takes even longer. So what we do, the county dispatches us if Bucks County's not available. We respond, and then we're there, and we provide first aid and coverage until that ambulance comes from out of town. We've had incidents in the wintertime where an ambulance was gonna be coming from Newtown. The ambulance that eventually showed up came from Marsville. So, I mean, that's, it's just, it's a matter of times of the demand on the, on the system.
I know, I'm just having a hard time understanding that if Ben Salem has, I don't know how many squads they have, they're tied up on their own call. So now we're going to assist Ben Salem. That, it's like a fire company, you move into the next station to assist them. But the problem I have is, these towns like Ben Salem are so much bigger than us. I mean, are they understaffed, or is it just so? How often does this happen where, and I've seen several times in town, an ambulance from out of town, not Bucks County Rescue Squad?
We've run about 140 calls so far this year.
And 140?
Of the 100, that's 140 calls where the ambulance was coming from out of town.
Out of town. See, to me, that's really unacceptable. And then we have something discussed tonight on the agenda where the squad wants us to do a referendum on the ballot, because they need additional funding. And I don't know if that's something that they need funding that's gonna provide us better service. I had asked Scott Bonner to give council a proposal, because we don't even know what additional funding they want. And to try to meet with them prior to tonight, and I'd like to set up a committee that sits down with them and see how we could better serve Bristol. I mean, look, I understand there's accidents that happen and we need to respond. It's like police, we calling backups from, from all over, but it seems like 140 times we needed to bring an ambulance from outside of Bristol to assist us because we were somewhere else.
We, we had a situation this past week where within 10 minutes, we were on three calls. Just, there was three, basically, three people in the borough got sick at the same time, and 143s were tied up. Well, even if they had two ambulances up, we still wind up getting called on that third call, because, you know, nobody has those kind of resources to be able to cover that.
Right. And I understand that, my concern is, God forbid, you have a kid that's choking on something, or went into cardiac arrest, just like when we honored them, people, they saved that little girl. I mean, if it wasn't for you guys and our squad with a quick response, God forbid, we could've lost that kid. Or an adult with a heart, you know, when there's a major problem, look, somebody sprains an ankle or something like that, we understand, you know, it's not that critical. But I'm talking about some serious things that could be happening, and we're sitting here waiting 18 minutes, 20, whatever it is, for somebody to come from Newtown or Ben Salem. And if we didn't have, maybe we need to figure a way to increase your services, to put more people on the street, because it seems like that's something, we're guaranteed that you're gonna respond to Bristol Borough only.
Right.
So I think it's something I would like to see, I would like to set up some kind of committee to meet with you and with Scott, before we do anything on a referendum to try to give the rescue squad. The problem with the rescue squad, from what I understand, is they take people to hospital, the insurance company is paying the fee, but the people are keeping the money, they're not giving it to the rescue squad.
Right, and I think that's what, the referendum is an attempt to try and address that issue.
To try to, so I, I like to sit with Scott, but I also like to see how we can increase the services, because if we're waiting on a squad to come from wherever, I think it's, it's important that we have people that are gonna service Bristol Borough only, and, you know, take care of, God forbid, some serious calls in town. And again, if you weren't, that call to us was serious to you guys, probably is a normal thing, but when somebody's unresponsive and they're laying on the ground, I mean, everybody's panicking, and they keep saying, where's the ambulance? Where's the squad coming from?
And that's one of the things that we try to do, like, we're at all the festivals-
Right.
And, and so we were there, we, we were there for that event ahead of time. We scheduled to be there at that event, and it just turned out that it was a good thing we were.
Right. So over, I mean, we're into the summer, and I think, you know, I'm gonna form a group to try to meet with you and see if we can improve your services, and then meet with Scott or everybody together and see how we can make this work. I know the mayor oversees the fire, fire department, but in this situation, we're funding it, so I'm gonna personally meet with you and a couple other people. That's all I have for Erich. Anybody else? Arnie?
Last week, we hosted a, a meeting with the lower Bucks Police Chiefs and the Bucks County Adult Probation and Parole Office. We met down here, and they informed us on some of the new programs, updated us on what was going on, fielded questions from us, just to make the probation and parole program that they have in place, and the clients that they have that live in the borough or that we have contact with in the borough, run a little more smoothly. It went over very well. We hosted a similar meeting last year also. Most of our officers have been trained and certified in the administering of Narcan to overdose patients. In addition to the training that they've received already, I'm having the Bucks County Rescue Squad come in and do some hands-on training before I administer, before I issue the Narcan to the officers. Some officers have been through both those trainings, and they're carrying the Narcan with them right now. It's one of those things where you hope you never have to use it, but we know we're going to.
I'm sorry, Chief, what is, what is Narcan?
Narcan, it's, it's what they call an opioid antagonist. It fights off the effects of heroin-
Oh, okay.
-or any other opiate that someone might overdose on. Bring in the Prism II really quick. We covered the Celtic Day Festival security, there weren't any, any issues at all. We're meeting one more time with the Puerto Rican Day Festival people this week to finish up our plans for Puerto Rican Day, which is July 25th, with a rain date of July 26th, and our annual movie night's coming up on July 17th, Friday, July 17th, in the Lions Park. Movie is Despicable Me 2. That's it.
Anybody have any questions for Chief? Eddie?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I know we hired two police, part-time police officers. Have we hired any more part-timers?
No, we recently interviewed another applicant, and we're bringing him in for some further testing. And I've also acquired a, a list of the people who took the Bucks County Police Consortium test recently, and that'll give me names of officers, of civilians or officers who have taken the test who are looking for, for part-time or full-time work.
Okay, and I know the mayor is out, sick today, but when he's feeling better, can you and the mayor, and I'd like to meet with you guys on some problems we're having, having some issues on Bath and Buckley, and, and I need to sit with you guys, and we need to figure something out here, because it's only a matter of time before it gets, it gets worse.
Okay.
I was hoping hiring some more part-timers, that would help, but the rate we're going, I think, you know, it's gonna be a long time before we can nip that in the bud. That's it.
Right.
She covered what I was gonna ask. Thank you.
I have a couple things, not to put you on the spot, but I asked to schedule a meeting, myself, Mr. Gerard, I asked Mr. Devine, Mrs. Rodriguez, with you and the mayor to discuss some serious issues. The mayor declined to meet with us. First, he's accepted, then he declined, then he accepted, then he declined, based on the fact that he thought he should get legal advice to meet with us. Why, I have no idea. I mean, if you can't talk to the mayor of a town, and the police chief about our concerns, it really seems foolish to me, but I can't speak for the mayor. I'm still trying, I'm still hoping that he will eventually meet with us. But during negotiations-
My mic was just broken, it's on, but it's okay.
Now, did I use Robbins?
Yeah, it's fine. I don't know what's up.
So, did you get nothing?
Yeah, no, well, just when he started, I wanted to drop it.
Yeah, right.
I got it.
Okay. So basically, the mayor declined to meet with us, I'm sure you're aware, and he's also declined that you show up at the meeting. He told the manager that he's not having you attend the meeting either. I don't know how we could run a borough if we can't meet with, with the mayor of our town. And I think Mr. Gerard and myself have some really serious concerns that we need to get addressed, and we need answers to. One thing that I want to make, I want to bring up publicly is the fact that during our negotiations with Robin, myself and, and Dave, there was twice mentioned that some of our police officers were borrowing vests, that we don't have vests for our police officers. That is unacceptable, and I said that to the PBA, that there is no way this council, any of us sitting here, would accept the fact that we have a cop that doesn't have a vest to protect him. And if that's the case, I think we're authorizing you tonight to go out and purchase vests for these police officers. I mean, this is the story we're getting in negotiations, that, you know, we want to discuss with the mayor and with you, and if we can't get a, here's my theory, I'm gonna just end it there, if we can't get a meeting with the mayor, sooner than later, I'm gonna make everything public that we're concerned about. So I'm gonna ask Jim again tomorrow to reach out to the mayor and ask him that myself and Mr. Gerard, Mrs. Rodriguez, and if Mr. Devine wants to be there, a meeting with him to get some things resolved, because we do have concerns that are coming up during negotiations, and not only during negotiations, things we're hearing. And if, we need to meet with the mayor of Bristol to sit down and discuss these things with us. But if we have, just for a side note, if these officers do not have vests, please purchase vests, because our police officers deserve the best of everything that we could provide them with. Now, I don't know if it's true, Arnie, or not true, but I understand, they don't have vests.
Or vests that fit.
Or vests that even fit. That's what's coming up back to us. And I know, I wanted to approach you privately, which I always do, but I'm not gonna, if I can't meet with the mayor, then I'm gonna make some things public, and it's no reflection on you. I don't want you to, I, I want to get this resolved. So please ask the mayor to meet with us as soon as possible. Tony, you're not working, right?
Nope.
So you could be available anytime?
Yep.
Dave could be available anytime, Betty's available anytime, and I'll make myself available.
Okay.
So we're asking the mayor to please meet with us. That's all I have. And I don't like doing it this way, but I have no other choice. And we need to get these cops hired and get our cops some help. Okay, anybody else have anything for Arnie? Alright, Betty, you have anything?
Yeah, I do. Just a few things. I just wanted to know, I remember seeing an email on the stop sign that I asked for on Market Street. I think we were gonna ask Officer Faith to look into it, but I didn't recall us getting anywhere with that. The property that we, that's gonna be developed, where the Bristol House used to be, it looks really, really, really big. Do we know when they're planning on starting anything there?
Yeah, there's been some major changes in the project managers, and in fact, we're talking about a huge groundbreaking, probably within the next two weeks, and they'll be, you'll see, you'll see some real, real changes on the site, so.
Alright, 'cause I did see some trucks there one, one day I drove by, but just people are getting upset when they come to the festivals or to the river, and the weeds are really out of control.
I'll certainly ask them to clean it up.
Yeah, if they can just clean it up a little bit, I'd really appreciate it.
Good problem.
Um, let's see. And just to remind everybody, that Puerto Rican Day is July 25th, with a rain date as July 26th, and that's it. That's all I have.
Jim, could you send them a letter officially from the borough to clean that site up with all the events? I know Robin will call them, but I don't think it's her job to-
You know what I wanted to do too? I'm sorry. If maybe next year, when we, if we can meet with the committee that does that first Friday, I mean, it's a wonderful event, I know a lot of people enjoy it, but we're having a lot of issues, because there's so many vendors on the sidewalk, that people are walking in the streets. Now, if we close the street, then the stores are gonna get upset. If we put no parking, then other people are gonna get upset. I just feel that I don't want to stop anything they do, I appreciate everything they do, but I think we should have some kind of connection, so that when people complain to us, we, we can, you know, explain to them that we had nothing to do with that part of the situation.
And I, I agree with Betty. I mean, I, I've been down there the last two first Fridays, and it's a great event. Everybody's out there, I would love to be able, I don't know how we do it, but I believe that it needs to, the street needs to be shut off, and the vendors with those tables need to go into the street, which will give, you know, it'll just open everything up. Because right now, even the people that are, that are on Mill Street, not the vendors themselves, but the businesses.
Right.
I mean, you can't even get into the businesses.
You can't get in, and people are going in and out of the street with strollers and little kids, and, and another thing that somebody mentioned to me, and I don't know, they actually reached out to Pendap, because we know it's, you know, Pendap Highway, that crosswalks, if maybe we can look into doing crosswalks on Mill Street, because people are, I mean, when these events are going on, and they're great events, I don't bash them, although I love it, but people are having a hard time getting even across the street. So I don't know what to do. I, I listen to everybody, I try to help everybody, but I think it's, it would've been nice to have some kind of forum with them, so we can just make it a safer event.
I know that, that Dan Holzler, and Shay Shalala, and they met with Arnie, I think, and Merle, to try to do the best they can to handle the traffic pattern. It's just become a major event, which is great for town. I'm sure that if, you know, we can meet with them again and see if we can, we have another one in August?
Yes.
And then hopefully by next year-
Yeah.
-come up with, you know, a better system.
Yeah, even if we did like the food trucks, I suggested that they do them at the river, like, all the food should be down at the river, so people can go down there, get their food, you know, buy the dwarf and everything. And it has to be a better way, so that, I'm just mainly concerned about the children that are trying to cross and weaving in and out of the traffic and-
Alright. Well, what is the, what is the process, if anybody knows, what is the process of being able to shut down Mill Street, the way we do on Bristol, that we get a, you know, part of, I think it is at Rackl Street?
Yeah.
That's the borough decision, they just decided to close it? We'll do it that way, but-
Yeah, and, and if we did, I would like to meet with them, because like I said, sometimes we'll attempt to do something like that, like, they do it for the car show too, but then the stores get upset.
You got the business owners that are, you know, they want traffic, the bank wants traffic. Arnie, do, maybe, and I don't want to give you, tell you what to do, maybe do parking on one side of the street, instead of both sides, and move the, the people out to the side, and do like a lane, where the cars would be, would be a lane for people to walk. I don't know, I mean, something, I know Merle's sick right now, but something you guys could maybe experiment for August and see how that works.
Because with every event, we're getting more and more and more people in town, and-
Well, this is what I understand, why can't people park down? Well, I don't understand.
That's a good question.
I, I really don't get it. I mean, when people say they can't park, I don't, there's a ton of parking in there. That's where I park at? You park there, you walk up. I mean, I don't understand what the problem is with people, in the sense that they feel like that's, that's not parking, it's too far away. I don't, I don't understand what the complaint is. And then for the first Friday, if, you know, we shut that, shut it down, it's only gonna be 5 to 8, so they're going to get way, if they stay open, if the store owners stay open, they're gonna get way more foot traffic than they ever, you know, will get on a regular day. So you'll get, you know, a ton more people going through there. So what do you, what do you think about shutting the street down? Is it something that's a pain? Is it something that is-
It's just, it's not difficult to do, but you might want to, again, check with the business association, see what they think.
That's fine, that's why I'm suggesting that-
Bring them into the meeting?
That we meet with them.
We have our event meetings?
Oh, yeah.
And the people that are running the event as well.
Right. Yeah, I don't want to step on anybody's shit, I just want to, I think we should work it out a little better than what it is.
Alright. Dave, what do you have?
Jim, did the borough ever get back Beaver Street alley in New Buckley there, that alley there, did we have time to address that complaint yet? Somebody, somebody stopped me again today, I said, I wonder if we got over there yet or not.
I'll check.
Okay. 847 Pine Street, again, it's, it's really, really bad. People, the, the back of that yard now is a mess, they're throwing branches and stuff in there. Any, any word on that, that building at all now?
It's on the agenda for discussion this evening. It's been recommended by Mr. Miller, and I concur, that we go out to bid, to, to obtain bids, to see what it would cost to stabilize that wall. That street has been blocked off for the last few months, so it's a recommendation that council consider authorizing, going out to bid next Tuesday, authorizing that, and we'll go out and secure bids, see what the bids are, then you can decide how you want to proceed. In the meantime, we're, we're trying to lock in exactly who owns that property.
Yeah, we don't know who owns that.
The previous owner, my understanding, has walked away, and, you know-
But that's by the bank, holding up, because Mr. Brown still owns it, or doesn't own it? They don't know?
I think Mr. Brown has walked away, has no intentions of coming back, as I understand, and-
That, that's my understanding too.
So the issue, it's recommended that council consider next week, authorizing going out to bid, to secure bids, to secure that wall.
Okay, if the council bears with me a little bit. My mother never had a driver's license, so when my dad passed, her children became her caregivers. Parking on Pine Street was, is always at a premium, so we had to either block traffic or make a 90-year-old walk to where we could find a parking spot. We applied for a handicap spot, but were denied, and I understand why, since none of the caregivers were handicapped, nor did we live at that address. But it made a hard job even harder. My neighbor is now in that situation, and was denied a handicap spot. She is not handicapped, but her mother has physical handicaps. She lives with her mother, works and takes care of her mother. I was hoping that council or the public could come up with a solution to help the caregivers of our community with transportation, with, with their loved ones. So that's, I understand why we can't issue handicap spots out, because everybody would want one, but it's just a shame, in, in my personal family, it, it was a real hassle for my sisters to get my mother in the car, take her to the doctors, or wherever she had to go, so, so now my neighbor, my neighbor's in that situation also. So if someone has an idea on that, I'd appreciate it, come up with a solution. Thank you, that's all I got.
Arnie?
Yeah, I have a couple things. First of all, I want to thank Jim for getting to those properties for me, Jim, getting them cut. I had the, I had a great answering voicemail from one of the residents on Second Avenue. They were singing a song when they heard the lawnmowers going and the, and the grass was getting cut. So they called me singing, so I was laughing, so I, I wanted to thank you, Jim, for getting that done for them. The second thing is trash cans along Beaver Street. I know that we talked about those heavy-duty commercial trash cans, might be too expensive, and, you know, really, the, the manpower to clean them up. So I was thinking if we could do some type of compromise, maybe those ones that they put on telephone poles, where, you know, they're not large baskets, and then we can have, you know, maybe, is, is there a way that we can have, like, a community group go and do the pickup? I know that we have Weechy that goes, goes around and cleans, I just don't know if there's- I just don't know if there's, you know, anything that we have to worry about legally, having a committee or a group or an organization that will go around cleaning out the trash cans, if we put a couple on those poles there on Beaver Street. Jim, Mr. Salerno, anybody?
Well, I get some costs and I'll bring the costs back to council. And if you can possibly give me the exact two poles that you want them on.
Okay.
And go from there. But again, the issue becomes if, you know, Borough Public Works has to, you know, pick those up. You know, I would say there's probably other areas in town that would need them also, you know. I know the Burger King's right down the street, that seems to be part of the issue, but that doesn't necessarily mean they're going to throw the trash in the trash can anyhow.
No, but it would just make it a little easier, you know, if they look up the street a little bit and there's a trash can, instead of throwing it on the ground. You know, they, they may wait, you know, fifty feet so they could put it in the trash bin. So, all right, so I'll wait for you to hear from that. How about the other scenario, Mr. Salerno? Is there, if we have an organization or a group that would like to do, to, you know, perform that task for us, is that something that we could do legally without being, you know, held responsible?
Yeah, I think there's some obvious concerns there. Somebody has to insure those people. I don't know if our carrier will or not. My other concern is, are they going to use our truck to do this? Or are they have to go back to the Public Works Building to dump it? I mean, there's a whole bunch of issues that are raised when you bring in somebody to do our work. So I think we need to think that through.
Okay. Understandable. The other question, I don't know if this is for the chief or the solicitor or the manager, but along, also along Beaver Street, there are a bunch of businesses. So they, so now that, you know, they're enforcing the two-hour time limit on Garden Street, which is great for the residents. I mean, we've been, you know, applauded and, you know, the residents along Garden Street are excited to see when the police are out there doing those two-hour tickets and monitoring and ticketing. But is there anything that we could do for those businesses along Beaver Street? Maybe allow them to have, you know, a ticket that they could be there, you know, just one per business? I think there's maybe, you know, maybe like five businesses there. Is that something that we could, we could do, or since they're not on Garden Street, it would be difficult?
That wouldn't be, go through us, so we go through, I think it's council and the manager's office.
Okay. What do you think about that, Mr. Dome?
I don't have a thought about it at the moment. Send me an email, I'll get it.
Like, what happens with the trains along Garden Street?
Okay.
People will just come there and park instead of parking in the Sephter parking lot.
Right.
And they would just stay there all day. So the people on Garden Street don't have a place to park because people are taking the train and leaving their cars there. So we have a two-hour sticker.
Right, that's what you did with Garden Street.
Right.
But you're talking about businesses now.
The business on Beaver, because they park, there's no park, because the people who are going to park on Garden Street now are taking the train, now they're coming onto
Beaver?
Beaver and parking there. And taking the businesses, you know, spots. Just for the owners, I'm talking about the people who are working, I'm not even talking about their customers. I'm talking about the people that are working there, so. All right, so I'll send an email for that.
Let me, I want to just give you my opinion on that.
Go ahead.
You know, I'm hearing from people on Mill Street that have businesses that are complaining that if you live on, if you have a business on Rackless Street or you live on Rackless Street, that you get a sticker, which is very minor cost, which I agree with. I think if you live on Rackless Street and you're a Borough taxpayer or a homeowner, you should be able to park there without getting a ticket. So that one section is issued a sticker so the police know, or the parking enforcement girl knows, not to give them a ticket. But there's people on Mill Street saying, I own a business here, I'm a taxpayer here, but I got to run outside to feed the meter constantly all day long. And they're willing to spend X amount of dollars a month to purchase a sticker so that they don't get a ticket and they can park on Mill Street. So maybe it's something we should form some kind of parking committee to look at all these areas to say, because I don't believe, and I know Mr. Salerno has a business on Rackless Street, and I'm not, I think that if you own a business, you should spend fifty dollars a month to park there. So if you're a homeowner, you're, like you said, people on Garden Street, they deserve to park there. But these businesses on Beaver Street, maybe they get a sticker and it costs them so much a month, whether twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars a month, where they're permitted to park there. But now you may get the people on Garden Street, you know, up in arms saying, they're taking my spot. So we really need to look at this, but I think we should look at it for Mill Street, Rackless Street, and any other Faragin area.
Faragin.
So we should look at, maybe it's a way to say, okay, if you want to park here, it's going to cost you X amount of dollars a month. Not a homeowner, just people that own businesses. So that's something I think we should discuss over the next several months.
All right, I like that idea.
What else you got?
And I guess the last thing is, have we made any progress over there with, with the Waltons on Mansion Street with that drain? Have we went over there and talked to them?
I think I asked George within the next ninety days to address that.
Okay.
I think thirty days are up.
Okay.
But he's on vacation this weekend. From Mansion Street?
Yeah.
We met with them the next day.
Okay.
Myself and Lorraine and George. And we came up with a solution, how to try to resolve the problem. I don't know if it's going to work, but we're going to give it a shot. It's just that George is understaffed right now.
Gotcha.
Tell them within ninety days, something will be done.
Okay.
And we met them in a pouring rain, too.
Yeah, that's all I have for, for North Ward issues.
Anything else?
I mean, just the things that we're going to, you know, talk about here from our...
Your ups, whatever you have.
Our work section. All right, so, I mean, the first thing that we talked about, I wanted to do a policy for appointments, boards and commissions. And we kept, you know, we kept putting it off, putting it off. I was hoping that Mr. Pezzio was here too, so, you know, I know he wanted to participate and open it up. But basically, let me read the purpose of it. It's to establish an orderly and fair process that provides all the residents of Bristol Borough equal access to specific and current information about vacancies on boards, commissions, and committees, to allow equal opportunity to be appointed and to provide for an inclusive application process. In the process of dominating appointments to boards, commissions, and committees, it is this council's intent for appointments to be reflective of the diversity of the entire community of Bristol Borough. The council will do this by adopting a policy that considers factors including, but not limited to, age, ethnicity, gender, veterans, disability, status, and geographical area, like per ward, just to have a, you know, consistency of different people in the wards. You know, you have two people from the east, two people from the west, just so it's, so it's equal. So I'm not going to read the whole, the whole thing, but, you know, this is something that we wanted to discuss as a, as a group and, you know, kind of hash out how we can go about this. So, anybody?
But we already follow the state. Like, what we do now is through the state. And I don't, you know...
Well, there's a lot, I mean, to me, Betty, a lot of things, like when we say that we follow the state, I mean, it, to me, it's just sometimes just common sense. Like, to me, if, if we have eighteen percent of the population's Puerto Rican, I think that we should have, you know, close to that number percentage-wise as our police officers in our boards and commissions.
I agree, but that's up to the people to come. Like, it's hard for me to get, to get anybody to come on board and want to be on anything. You know what I'm saying? Like, I've been here for, going on twelve years, and I asked a lot of people if they would like to be on any boards or commissions, and they...
Right, but here's the fact...
And I also don't feel that if they did, we would never discriminate or tell them they couldn't be, if there's Puerto Ricans or blacks or whatever. So I just feel like we do follow the state, but that's just me.
Right, right, right. I was talking about, like, if this is something that was posted on, you know, on the channel, and it was coming out, we have vacancies, put your name in, and they knew it was going to go through a process. Right now, it's just basically, we ask as a group, we ask individuals, all right, I think this person will be good, or this person will be good. And it's basically, it's going to depend on the majority of who's in here.
Well, I would like to see more people involved, that's why I want to.
Right, I do too.
You know what I mean?
But I, I think that it would be better, we would get more people involved, especially people that maybe are kind of not going to go up and ask, you know, they would like to be involved, or they don't follow as much. You know, if, if we make it more available and, and they know it's going to be going through a process, that's a fair process.
That's right, because everybody's entitled and everybody's more than welcome.
Right. So, I mean, that's the way I would like to see it. I mean, we did something, I mean, we passed unanimously that we wanted to recognize the, I think it was the gay and lesbian community, to make sure there's no discrimination when we talk about the hiring practice. Like, to me, we passed that unanimously, and we were, we were following the state before that. I mean, we weren't doing anything that was... Right, so we're following, but to me, this is just something that makes, makes sense. It's, there's a voice there. So that way, when you have people that come up from the community and things are, you know, may not be going the way they want to, we could, we could say, listen, this is, these are the people that we have in these positions, let's talk, and, you know, so there's open, open communication, open lines for, you know, for different groups.
Anybody else have anything on that? The only, the only thing I would like to say is I don't have a problem with listing any boards and commissions online on the Borough website to see if somebody sees there's an opening, but as far as, for anybody new, as far as reappointing people, I mean, I don't have a problem reappointing people that's been here. There's no reason...
Right.
To get rid of somebody if they're doing a good job. And I don't feel that this Borough discriminates against anybody. So as far as putting it on the website, I have no problem with that, but that's what I'd be in favor of, though.
Well, and the other thing about that too is not to, you know, not to say anything contrary to what you're saying now, but before when we talked about it, you said that as long as, you know, the, the former people who were on these boards or commissions are interested in doing it again, that we're just going to appoint them if they were doing a good job. That's what we talked about, and I think that's what you said, I mean, your own words were that, Mr....
You said it again.
Right, but what I'm saying is, but then we had an issue, there was a, there was a gentleman that was on the police civilian board, and he's an African-American gentleman. He was the only one that was on that board, and, and he sent us a letter that he was interested in being on it again, and we didn't vote for him. We voted for, I think it was Joe Sacks, to put Joe Sacks on that board, who's always been involved in, in doing, you know, a lot of things politically around the town. So we got rid of a new face, somebody, you know, that was, that may have had a different opinion or, or different ideas, and he's representing a different ethnic group. And we basically, you know, went over him and picked another white guy, so...
I think you're playing the race card, and I'm not even...
No, I can't play a race card because I'm, I'm not, I'm not black.
I think that's an embarrassment to this council to say that because he was black and we got...
I didn't, I never said that.
The guy's a nice guy, he's a friend with everybody.
Listen.
And we had an opportunity, Joe was, I think at that point, a better candidate. He knows all about the police department, he was the mayor, and you had an opportunity to put him on, and it just so happened, his seat was up, and I don't think it has anything to do, I take offense to that.
Okay, well, you take offense because you're not listening to what I'm saying. I didn't say, I didn't say...
No, you did.
No, I didn't.
You said because he was black.
No, no, I said, if, now...
You put a white guy on it, that's what you said.
Yeah, you did, that's what you did.
So I take offense to that.
You're allowed to take offense, but what I'm saying is, you have these types of things in there, right? You have these types of things, you won't have that issue.
That's fine.
Because it needs to be a certain percentage.
If it's your motion, you put it on the agenda. We'll go with that, too. Anybody else, you have anything else, Tony?
No, that's it.
Green, you go.
Jim, I wanted to ask you if there was any way that in the morning pickup for trash could happen on Mill Street first rather than down the other end? Because it just looks so bad all day long out there. And I'm sorry to, you know, say this. I know this is your area, and I understand that, but it's, it's just upsetting...
It's like the weekends when they have the festivals and everything.
It's really upsetting to me to see, to drive down there, and, and I do it a lot because I, I have to water plants that I planted. And it just, it's really upsetting because, first of all, people don't have trash cans. They're putting trash bags on the street, and they're just sitting there all day long. And if, I don't know, is it, is it a possibility?
I'll ask them, I'll ask the trash company what ramifications or...
Okay, I just thought, you know, probably from where they're coming, they come in on Green Lane and just start down that end, but maybe we could...
Matter of fact, Green Lane's the last one usually.
It, well, mine gets done pretty early, actually. Also, their light number thirty-nine is out on the path. And we've been meeting about the Do-Op, and it's the Tenth Annual Do-Op. It is going to be September nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. If it rains, it'll be Sunday, September twentieth. It's at four o'clock in the Mill Street parking lot. And they're going to have the legendary Teenagers, the Caprice, Emilio Sucio, and the, the Classics, Joel Katz, and the Dynamics, and the Chicklets. And there's also going to be vending the trucks that are going to be out there as they always are. So I just wanted to mention that. That's it. Thank you.
I just have a couple quick things. One is I got a lot of phone calls for trash pickup on Friday since Fourth of July was Saturday. I think everybody needs to realize that the only time we do not pick up trash is on the actual holiday. Am I correct?
Yes.
So what I like to do is try to put something on the Borough Channel in the future or on our website saying that there will be trash pickup on Friday. So unless the trash pickup is actually on the holiday, we pick up trash. The other thing is the sweeper, the same thing. If the boroughs close on a holiday, which we were closed Friday, there is no street sweeper. So again, if we could publicize the street sweeper and trash going into, like, the next holiday now will be Labor Day, right? More, yeah, Labor Day. Got my months mixed up. Let's try to get something out, but I think for Borough residents, because what happened was, after the trash truck went by, everybody started running out with their cans. Then they were calling and saying, oh, the trash guy went by, he didn't pick my trash up. So they started looping, trying to double loop the town. It was almost impossible. So trash pickup is always, unless it's on a physical holiday. The other thing is, we have our bid opening for our boat docks this Wednesday at ten a.m. and Kurt's here to update us on that. It's a public bid opening. If anybody from the public or taxpayers or anybody wants to come here, it'll be held in Borough Hall at ten o'clock on this Wednesday, July the eighth. Kurt, you want to update us, or you have anything you want to?
Two, two things, I was going to just update the Borough on, the docks was the one, and that's, like you said, the bid opening's Wednesday, ten o'clock, we'll, we'll hold it here. The project is again up on PennBid, which is a website for public bidding. And we've seen a fair amount of interest, we're excited about there being a number of bidders who have indicated that they will be submitting a bid. So hopefully they will be favorable. Just a quick summary, as you know, the bids came in higher than expected last time, so we've been pursuing some additional funding sources. We have the R A C P grant that's already been submitted, and there's a new grant to D C E D, Department of Community and Economic Development. We're submitting that grant at the end of this month. In addition to that, we've also provided the alternate bid items in the bid package where we could reduce the length of the dock to see if we can close the gap for funding. The other thing I wanted to bring everyone up to speed on is, for many years, we've been trying to figure out how to improve some of the flooding conditions that are going on in town, and, um, if you're not familiar with how the drainage works, there's two big creeks that come through town. There's the Otter Creek that comes from Silver Lake and goes under Route thirteen, under the rail, railroad tracks, and then it goes under, um, old Route thirteen, Otter Creek, and down along Roman Haas', uh, property. And then, on the other side of the Silver Lake, there's Adams Hollow Creek that comes down from the Burger King, comes out of Silver Lake also, comes down past the Burger King, behind Hubble Lighting, down through the, uh, Canal Park, and into some residential areas where it goes into a box culvert, and ultimately drains into the river at the Delvee Apartments. And for years and years, the flooding has gotten worse throughout the borough, and we've been, uh, working with Merle and some others in town to try to come up with ways to improve it. And now is a better time than ever to try to get ahead of this, because we're seeing all the construction from Route thirteen that's occurring, and we have the Turnpike interchange with ninety-five, so they're adding a lot of lanes, and usually that increases the runoff, though there are stormwater requirements where they're to be offsetting that impact. Um, and then, uh, we also have the Delaware Canal, which, you know, they're always trying to get that full of water, so it's another source where it could overflow into the park and into the, these drainage areas that ultimately drain to the Delaware, but through our backyards. So we're trying to figure out how we can either hold back water above us, or increase the efficiency of that water to move past us without overflowing onto our properties. So, we've, we took it all the way to the Army Corps, and, uh, we had a real good conference call with folks from the Army Corps, and Fitzpatrick's office was involved in it, and they actually have funding that they can put towards this, and the Army Corps can actually perform the flood study to come up with ways that could possibly assist in improving the flooding. So, they've estimated that the cost for that study is around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and their funding source has a fifty-fifty match, so the borough would have to come up with seventy-five thousand, that's a lot of money. But what we also did is we connected up with the D C E D, and they have a fund, a grant funding program called the Flood Hazard Mitigation Program, which has like a fifteen percent match requirement. So, you'll be, uh, voting on a resolution to pursue the grant with D C E D for seventy-five thousand, of which the borough is pledging like twenty thousand to go towards that. So we're hoping to leverage the twenty thousand, turn in a hundred and fifty thousand, so the Army Corps can do this study, which would be nothing more than coming up with feasible solutions to fix the problem, then we'd have to go back and try to get construction funding to actually construct that project. And again, the Army Corps thinks down the road that they would have funding that could assist the borough in doing that. So, it's a bigger effort than just within the borough, and we're talking really regionally. These watersheds go miles upstream, um, and so we're making good progress, we're excited about all the involvement and the feedback we've been getting from the agencies, and this is a big first step in really trying to undertake this effort. So, is there any questions on the boat docks or that?
No.
Funding?
Thank you.
Yeah, good, no, Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah, we're cautiously optimistic, but we'll see.
Dave?
Uh, the last time we only had two bidders, uh, how many, how many do you think we're going to have this time?
I think as of this morning, because on the, uh, PennBid, you can see who's downloaded the documents, and there was like sixty people that have downloaded, but a lot of them are just people that'll provide subcontracting, or vendors or materials to the job. But you can select whether you'll be priming it or a subcontractor, and I think as of this morning, four bidders indicated that they would prime, but at least another bidder has been asking a lot of questions, so it seems like they're going to prime also. And then, of the two that bid last time, not until this morning did the second guy download. So hopefully we get, we're hoping for around five bidders, which is great. But we're still hearing through S.T. Hudson, who's the boat dock designer, that the industry's still very, very busy.
It's amazing that sixty people download, and you made it five.
Yeah, well, you know, you got guys that are like, you know, manufacturing the cleats to tie the boat up.
Right.
So they've downloaded, even though they might only be supplying such a small fraction of the job.
What time are the bids, uh, do they have to be in?
Ten o'clock.
They have to be...
Uh, yeah, I forget what, I don't know if there's a cutoff, I think it goes almost up to the last minute.
It's electronic?
Yeah, it's electronic. So the nice thing about PennBid, if you're not familiar with it...
I was, I saw, I was here.
We load everything up there, and then of the sixty people that download, what it does is it gives easy networking, so fifty-five vendors can submit all of their pricing to the five people who are submitting a bid. So instead of somebody calling two or three vendors, they're getting access to fifty-five. So we're trying to, you know, ultimately they assemble the best package that'll give us the best pricing. And it's, it's real convenient to share information, they ask a question, we respond to it, and all bidders get notification that, you know, so it saves a lot of administrative time costs also. We'll see, ten a.m., Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Jim, you got anything?
Uh, just the items that are listed on the, uh, proposed agenda for next week, uh, we discussed the resolution about the flood study that Kurt just mentioned, this certainly is Merle Winslow's pet, pet project for the last two years or so, and, uh, so, uh, like Kurt said, we have a lot of construction going on with Route thirteen and the Turnpike and, uh, I ninety-five, and, uh, it all comes down, uh, to emptying at the river, and of course, we're at, uh, right there at the river with those two creeks. Uh, we discussed the alerted resolution based on the hearing earlier this evening. Uh, again, appoint, uh, Mr. Salerno as the Borough arbitrator for the lease contract arbitration that was discussed at the last, uh, regular meeting of council. Discussed, uh, eight forty-seven Pine Street to consider authorizing receiving bids for the repairs, and also, uh, interfaith housing. Uh, we became aware that the county has exonerated, uh, one property in, in the borough, uh, the Borough Council can appeal that one, that deadline is, uh, the seventeenth of, uh, this month, but also, uh, it's the feeling that if they're exonerating that one property, all the other, uh, interfaith properties in the town, uh, will be, uh, probably exonerated too, unless, uh, council, uh, appeals and is successful. We understand other municipalities are now becoming aware of this, and, uh, there may be other municipalities, uh, you know, filing appeals, so...
Who determines, Jim, when they get their, uh, when they, when they're granted this, when they're exonerated from...
The county, the county, uh, uh, granted the exoneration...
Of that one property.
...of Ben Seon, uh, Lee, versus Morrisville.
But the interfaith housing is under, uh, uh, great scrutiny these days, and are going to probably partner up with a place called Vision Works. I mean, they're, they're, they're in a little bit of trouble, so I can understand why they need to be exonerated from taxes, but it's certainly...
Well, the borough has to provide services for all these properties, they're all occupied, and certainly, uh, these properties, uh, generate numerous children, too, so the school district should certainly, I think, uh, our solicitor has put the school district on notice, uh, because, uh, was really came in under the, the radar, this exoneration, to tell you the truth.
Well, it's also my understanding that a lot of these properties are going to be foreclosed upon. I mean, so that's another thing, because, meaning that interfaith housing may not be owning them for the next year or so, so, you know, you're, you're going to, how does that, how does that work going forward? If it were to be foreclosed upon the property, is the exoneration follow the property?
Can't answer yet. We don't know why the county has granted the exoneration at this time, and, uh, it's, you know, can't answer. So it's recommended that council authorizes the, uh, the appeal of that one property that's been granted exoneration, so, and that's all that I have.
Do we have any time?
No.
Public participation, anybody on this side of the room? Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything?
Yes, we do.
Go to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm Janice Harrow Grove, I live at six oh three Bath Street in Bristol. And, um, my concern is about the, um, different, um...
Recovery?
Recovery houses, and we'd like to have some more information on it, who makes the decision about where they're put, and what do they entail, and what type of people are, you know, being put in these facilities? Because we live on a street that has a lot of children, and there's one being, um, placed right next to my neighbor, which is an arm length of two ch- elementary children. And so, um, I just want to know what type of backgrounds do they have?
We're talking about Mr. Williams' house now, yes.
Yes, and I, we were not even aware of, I was not personally aware that we had three or four already on Bath Street, and I was just wondering why this, this seems to be a thing coming up now.
Let me, let me just give you a, if you want to meet after the meeting, I can speak more freely than I can on TV, but basically, a rehab house, a recovery house, whatever you want to call them, is sanctioned through the federal government. So the federal government doesn't consider them a nuisance or anything like that, they just, they consider that a family living in recovery, and they fall under the American Disability Act. Therefore, we have no jurisdiction over that home to tell them, all we could do is control the amount of people that are in there, and that's based on a square foot number. They don't even fall under the rental program, which is considered a rental unit, because they're considered a family that's living together in, in this home. And, uh, you know, I have one on my str- I have a couple on my street, so it's not something that, you know, every time it pops up next to somebody, you know, everybody gets up in arms, but for most of the time, they're not bad people, they're, you know, they have some issues, but again, you like to know who's in there, but we have no jurisdiction over that. Billy, why don't you explain, I mean, we challenged this, and we tried every, excuse me, everything you can do, just like they opened the one up on the corner of Beaver and Buckley, in the mansion, and everybody was opposed to that, and, but it seems like now there's no issues, they opened one up in St. Mark's.
Just the same as, Mr. Giuggezeppe, I was looking into this, too, because I had heard about it, but, uh, we're not even sure if now there will be two. I know there's one further down on Bath.
There's quite a few.
My name is...
There is no, there is no limit to the same...
Right, but I, I thought that, I had heard that the people from that house were moving into this house, so I don't even know, we're, we're looking into it and trying to find out more information.
So I think for myself, my name is Paschahde Shuld, and I live, I live next door to Mr. Williams' old house, and I think my concern is, is that there seems to be a lot of these houses popping up out of nowhere. Um, I think that it's understandable that people are concerned. Um, I know what recovery houses are, and rehab, and halfway houses, um, I'm going to help rehab them for quite some time. If I did not know what they were in the background, where the people who were coming and going, it wouldn't be such an issue, but I do know, and I'm the one with the two children, and on the opposite side of his house, there's teen, there's teenage girls that are there as well. So, I'm all for the helping out, and I understand them not wanting to have readmissions because the cost of insurance money, companies' money, however, maybe if the location could be a little more thought out, that would work better for some people, um, because there's a lot of factors that go into having them in these homes. Um, I know that they are coming from rehab, and they're transitioning here before they go out to their community, wherever that is. So that means that they're still in that delicate stage. I grew up in a township, but I've been in borough for almost twenty years. I've always felt secure, safe here, never had any issues, nor straightened up problems, but now I feel that that's threatened, and now I have an issue with that. Um, I, I would not like to have an issue with it, but it's just the unpredictability...
Yes, can I interject a little?
The uncertainty.
I too, I have, um, I work with this type of population, I've been doing it for thirty-some years, and I also know with recovery, before recovery, there is drug addiction, alcohol, whatever, you know, mental illness, all of that comes into play. So having known that, there are other things that could come, suppose they backlash, they have people that live in these homes that are monitoring them, are they just free to go up and down the street, you know, as they please, are any of them sex offenders, are there any things on the books that, that will let you know?
If, if they're on Megan's Law, the police chief is notified, right, Arnie, immediately, if there's anybody who moves into the borough, that's a sex offender?
Yes.
So we're aware of that situation immediately.
We just, you know, it's, it's just a, a very big concern, like I said, it might even be a curse, because we are in the industry that we know a lot about the possibilities of all the things that could possibly go wrong.
We just, we just really have to be careful how we address this, because, just to give you a little background, at, at one meeting, something was said, and the entire council, including all the borough employees and the mayor, had to go to sensitivity training to understand how to deal with this. So...
Sure.
It's very difficult for us, I mean, me personally, I mean, if somebody else wants to respond, it's up to them. But again, if you want to talk after the meeting, I have no problem spending, sitting down with both of you and explaining our position on this whole thing.
Okay. So I, okay, so, go ahead.
Okay, the only question I have is, is there any process, I mean, it's all over, it's all over the borough.
It's all over.
Yeah, it's all over the borough. Is there any process that the community, you know, is, is made aware of, that they have a meeting, they can talk to, they could be, you know, made aware of, of the situation prior to them moving in? Is there any process that, that they go through, or they could just, you know, just...
No, more than family, you have to sit down and immediately, are they moving in?
No, but...
They're considered a family. The American Disabilities Act says that recovering alcoholics and addicts are considered a family, they're considered a protected class. So that, no, they don't, there's no meetings, there's no committees, they have nothing to answer for, what they do is they go into a group home, and I agree with you, some of them are wonderful. Some people who are trying, I always said I'd rather live next to a group home than a raging alcoholic next door, who beats his wife every day. Some of them run wonderfully with a, with a manager, they check in, they check out, they go to A A meetings, they have to have jobs, I mean, some of them in this town are, are, could hardly be, be, uh, defined as a recovery house, because they're not, because there are people in there drinking, and those are the ones that concern me, not the ones where, you know, they're trying to get sober and get their lives began.
Sure, I can, I can definitely understand that, however, when I say unpredictability, because we don't know what's coming next door. We don't know who's living next door, so I would love for it to be, what you said is, it's great, happy-go-lucky, everybody's hopping and skipping, but we don't know that. And my concern is, is that I'm very well of the cultural differences and sensitivity, that's why I said I don't, it really would not be too much of an issue if the location was different, because they have these climate conditions that are going on, and they're serious, and they have things that they're working through, so that's why they're in the house, that they can work through these issues. So that's where I come with the unpredictability, because I have taken care of patients who were in these homes as well. And sometimes it can be frightening, especially when they're being medically treated, and for whatever reason, that medical treatment is not effective at that time. So that, I just think that, like, what Tony was saying was, was one of my questions, is what is the process, because I feel like they're just popping up all over. So, is there a process in place? If so, what is that process?
There is no process.
So...
Every house in town could be a halfway house.
So when you consider family for recovery houses, there's a progression, and everyone's not at the same progression in these houses, because they're being worked back into community, whether it's getting a job, whether it's learning how to, you know, interact with your family, so everyone's at different levels. So if this, there's seven people in the home, and there's three who have reached a level and they can go, they're going to move in another three. So...
They move in.
There's a lot of turnover, a lot of transition.
And I think that a lot of the concern is, is, you're right, it's transient.
Yes.
And that's what's, 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 the, the worst unknown, is because it is, it isn't as if a family moves in and lives there for five years, you get to move, it's a transient of, of...
It'd be an unstable environment, and I don't think that that's been insensitive, I just think that it is what it is, because I work it all the time, and I see it all the time, and as well as she.
So do I, yes.
You know, so...
I reached out to Mr. Williams, because I don't... I reached out to Mr. Williams, because I don't even think he was aware of what was going to be happening there.
He had no idea.
No.
I'm pretty sure of it. You know, we've all known him for years. He's flipping over right now.
Yeah, yeah, and Jimmy, his grandson, is my son's best friend, and I asked him, does he realize that, you know, they're moving beds in there, and he's supposed to be getting back to me, but he didn't have any idea.
Oh, he got back to me.
Yeah?
Yeah, he got back to me. I, I still wonder about that as well, but that's neither here nor there.
Yeah.
I, yeah.
I don't know. Now we have bums just sitting across the street for like 24, 48 hours, like, hello, it's not a free-for-all. I just feel like Bristol Borough is in the way Bristol Borough has been, which is why I came from the township to the borough.
And I've lived here all my.
It's, and now for like a minute township again.
And I've lived here all my life, and pretty much everyone knows everyone, but now there's so many, and, like I said, like Paschy was saying, I don't have any problem with, you know, people of difference, but when it's so noticeable and it's so frightening, like, you know, somebody just pops up and starts speaking and jumping around, because I've seen some of that, you know, and there's kids playing, kids are going to get scared. So, you know, what do you tell your children? Do you let your kids outside? I mean, you know, I'm not saying that they're going to get immediately hurt, but there's a possibility. So in, in the, huh?
There are four, and I hear what you're saying, and I hear it all the time, it's my frustration too, there are four people who are homeless that are living down in the Mill Street parking lot, and the police know that who they are. I'll go ahead and show you their car.
Oh, I believe it. I mean, right up the street, where the underpass is.
No, it used to be this way.
Where the underpass is, as you're going towards the Luke Will, there's a, Dan was laying out there sprawled on his back. I thought he was dead at first, but then I saw him move, you know, so. These are just our concerns. If in the event that if something like this should happen, who are we to call? We to call the police directly?
911.
Okay.
911.
So I guess they have to be protected, because there's so much unpredictability. It's just, I think it's just too much in such a small town at one time.
We agree.
I think it's just too much.
And the proximity of the homes are too close.
There's nothing we can do about it, though. Nothing.
That's terrible.
It is terrible.
And you know, we don't, we don't want to sound pessimistic, like I said.
No, no.
Working in this field, I mean, we might even know too much, because I've seen some worst-case scenarios. I mean, one minute you could be happy-go-lucky, next minute you just freak out and flip out for no reason, you know? And I, I'm trained to take, to do that, to take care of people like that. The majority of the people are not.
Yeah, I guess, I guess this question's for Robin. Robin, you said that you've, you've seen houses where recovery houses are run, you know, they're run in an organized way to have a manager.
There's a manager.
So what do you do, or who do you go to when there's, when you know that they're not running it the right way?
Well, that was, to me, it's interesting, because when we had a problem, we heard about this, my suggestion to, to a number of council people was that if you can define, you know, if you've got these houses where they pretend that they're recovery houses, they make it, it's very profitable. They will spend money. If you go past a, a recovery house on Lafayette Street, and there are people who are sitting out front drinking beer, my, my immediate thing would be to, to contact, number one, the police, because in my opinion, that's not a recovery house. There are people drinking on the premises. You no longer get to be protected by the ADA, because you're not a recovery house. Or if you find someone who left that house and is willing to testify that there's drinking or drug use in that house, they lost their, they lost their, their certification in being a protected class. And I think that's what I would probably, uh, plant down on, to make sure that they're all sober people living. They're not afraid of the sober ones.
Now, do all these houses, are they, is it mandatory for them to have someone like a house parent or someone to be there?
No, it's not mandatory. The, the good ones are the ones that, that have the managers.
Yeah.
But, but, but there's one, you know.
So who's monitoring whether they're, you know, who's monitoring whether they're not just.
Obviously, nobody. There isn't any state, I know, but if there isn't any state mandate that says that they have to be run a certain way, then maybe there's, maybe there should be.
So how is, they're being funded? So how, are they proving they're not being funded?
No, it's all private pay.
It's private pay. Right.
I, yeah.
So something's going to have to happen in order for something to happen. It's going to be more reactionary than anticipating something, and it, it's terrible. I just, and I don't want to feel like I'm being forced out of Bristol, but I feel like I'm being forced out of Bristol. It's terrible, like, we all been here.
I don't think, I don't think it's Bristol. I mean, I don't care where you go, whether it's Bristol Township, Yardley, Lower Makefield, Levitt, I mean, there's recovery houses everywhere.
Oh, I'm sure, but you know, we're talking basically, you know, this is personal to us, because we live here.
I agree.
And we grew up here.
Right. We all grew up out here. We're all, I mean.
I understand what you're saying. It's just our hands are tied, unfortunately.
So who does make the decision?
Federal government.
So they can just say, Bristol Borough, this is what you.
Federal government means they make a federal law. It's not just for Bristol, it's for everybody.
Mm-hmm. So there's no one monitoring their recovery? Wow. But why is it called recovery? I mean, there's no, really? Thank you.
Like I said, if you want, I could speak to you more clearly.
Yeah, we would appreciate it, yeah.
I can't, I would say nothing on TV.
All right.
Well, it's nice to know that you guys.
We're well aware.
Understand. Okay. I was worried that.
No, we're all in.
We appreciate it. Yeah, we'll, we'll wait around and speak with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Jim has one more.
I forgot, Mr. Pezza gave me a couple other things to bring up. Real quick, he just wanted to thank the Borough crew for their prompt, prompt response to various issues, including lights and curb painting. Also, he wanted to mention that, about the rules and regs pertaining to power lines above in-ground, or above-ground pools. There's a number of people who have installed pools without permits, and without, therefore without fences, plus the pools are underneath power lines, so we've sent notices out to the, the property owners that they have to come in and get a permit. And specifically, the article that deals with power lines is Article 680 of the National Electrical Code for Swimming Pools. So it's just a issue that, you know, somebody could really get electrocuted, and that's why we've always encouraged people, please come in and get your permit, you know, or we'll expedite it, but, so that's the two things he asked me to mention, so.
Can I, can I say something? I, I just would like for everyone to please pray for Merle. He's been not feeling well, and they're not sure what's wrong with him, and we should all pray. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything? I got a motion to adjourn.
Motion.